I know that feeling. I heard the phone, I said, I'm gonna go ahead and you're gonna be there.
I find that terrible. All right, we'll go ahead and start, I guess.
All right, call meeting, the September 3rd, 2024, Planning Commission regular meeting to order. We'll start with opening prayer, I'll say the prayer. And for we just come to unite, we just ask for wise decision making, Lord, we just thank you for all of our county officials, Lord, and all they do for us, Lord, we just ask for calm in this meeting, Lord, and just thank you for allowing us to do this, just no pray, amen. All right, we'll start with roll call.
Chairman Scott Stroud.
Here.
Vice Chairman Brett Ivester.
Here.
Commissioner Greg McFarland. Commissioner Mark Randall.
Here.
Commissioner Cody Cobb.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda, everybody should have a copy of the agenda. Anybody seen changes need to be made or comments? All right, I'll entertain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and the minutes from the last meeting, everybody should have a copy of those. Any comments, changes, need to be made to those? entertain a motion for the.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Minutes are approved, and now, I'll turn it over to Christian, he'll give us some rules, whatever.
Yes, we'll now begin our public hearing process, the public hearing portion of the Planning Commission meeting. The way this will begin, we've got five items scheduled for tonight, we'll call each of those items in turn. Actually, we've got four of those items that are for two pieces of business, so we can actually just go through those together, each of those together if you'd like, but we'll call for the public hearing. Each individual will have up to 10 minutes to speak, we'll first call for those wishing to speak in favor of each item. Following all those who've wished to speak in favor, we'll then call for those wishing to speak in opposition to each item. If there is a need at the pleasure of the chairman, a rebuttal could be provided in the amount of three minutes for the property owner. Our county clerk will be timing all those who wish to speak. We do ask if you wish to speak to please give your name and address for the record and to come up to this podium. Please keep it turned, the way it is right now, we're working on that, but that helps us get in the camera, we're live streaming this meeting. Is there any questions about how this meeting will commence tonight? Okay, all right, with that being said, we'll move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. The first item of business is a variance request from Brandon Tarpley, 4348 Riverdale Road, Tacoa, parcel 049D058. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to allow for an accessory dwelling unit within the side yard. According to Chapter 59, Article 2, Section 59-201, detached ADUs, accessory dwelling units, are only allowed within the rear yard and thus a variance is required should an ADU be placed in the side yard. According to the property owner, the ADU is approximately 400 square feet, and the property owner has stated that the structure will meet all setback requirements, which will be confirmed by the marshal's office. The ADU must meet all building code requirements, must pass inspection, and must be issued a valid certificate of occupancy before it can be declared fit for habitation. Staff recommendation is that approval be granted contingent upon meeting all code requirements. With that being said, recommendation from staff is to approve as requested, contingent upon meeting all code requirements and being issued a valid certificate of occupancy. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission before we open this up to the public hearing?
If it were denied, could the building stay there?
No, sir, it would have to move.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this variance request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Yes, sir, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record.
Ryan Dooley. I know most of y'all. I live in Kansas. This dwelling is supposedly going straight across the road from Traveler's Rest. I've been keeping an eye on it. It says proposed is a variance allow accessory dwelling on the side yard. A dwelling is consists of a home, right? We got building codes for that. This thing is sitting on cement block, it's on the ground, there's not a footing under it. It's a storage building. Code says it's gotta be 19.4 inches maximum, this is on the floors, floor joists, the studs, the whole line yards, all right. It don't meet all that, if it's a storage building, which it is. There's a well right next to it, and I'm assuming they're gonna use that as their septic tank, because they don't have access to septic tank unless they pump it uphill to the one that's to the adjacent trailer. This is okay for them to live there and accommodate themselves for what they need, okay? That may be what happens, I don't know. But we got to look at future, the next people to come in there and buy this place after they had gone, assuming they got something that's relevant, supposed to be the code, and it's not. This is not the first time this thing's been swept under the rug, and I know that. But I'm gonna stop this if there's any way I can. I talked to Mr. Hamilton about it some time ago. Problem with it is, is right now, there's, y'all gonna say it's okay to do it, and it's gonna get further and further down the road, and then they gotta get it inspected. How much time and energy is somebody lost in this scenario? Check it now, if this already there? If it's there, and you inspect it, is it the code, then move forward. If not, who's wasting the money? Y'all wasted people's time, it shouldn't even go before the commissioners. I hope y'all understand what I'm saying. I've been in the business for a long time, and this is wrong, thank you.
Let me ask you a question, I know it's not your place, but does it have a bathroom in it?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? The land use public hearing for item number one is closed.
Have the marshals went out, does it have a, do we know if it has a restaurant, bathroom, do we know anything about it?
The marshals haven't been inside the structure, they'll only check setbacks right now at this point. And of course, the complaint was called about it being there. Again, if you decide to approve the variance, staff recommendation would be highly to make it contingent upon passing building code requirements and meeting setback requirements. There would have to be windows added, if there's no windows, there'd have to be plumbing done, electrical done. It would probably require quite a bit to bring it up to code. If for some reason it could not be garnered a certificate of occupancy, then yes, it would have to move, because your motion would need to be made contingent upon that if you decide to allow it.
And do we know? If, we don't know for sure if someone's living in it currently?
They told the marshals that no one is living in it, and our marshals told them no one can live in it until, if approved, a variance is approved.
Do we know who would be living in it? Is it family?
I believe it's family, yes.
Is there a hardship for this?
I haven't been made aware of a hardship, apart from, they placed it down before getting permission. And just bear in mind, again, this is an accessory dwelling unit, there must be a principal structure occupied on site for this to be allowed in accordance with our ordinance.
Seems like, up until now, just about every one of these that we've done, since I've been on the board, whether it's add another home, or mobile home, or whatever, there has been a hardship. And we were aware of it, and, you know, I kind of, I don't know how about, how I feel personally about setting the precedent of, and, you know, I'm a real estate, I tell people every day, hey, we can't have this. You can't do this in Stevens County, and, you know, I just, if there's a hardship, it's one thing, and Mr. Dooley, I don't know, you know, I don't know the person. I just, I would like to see and hear them say, hey, we got elderly, you know.
Present it different, basically, or do the needs come to a meeting?
And I think if that was the case, a person would have been here in favor of it.
Yeah.
Good thing, otherwise, we're setting the precedent, it's a good good thing.
Yeah, I just don't, you know, personally, I'm a big proponent, you're allowed to do what you want to, but I'm also, we got roles here for a reason, if I gotta follow him, Scott's gotta follow him, and everybody else does. You know, so I would love for him to come back and present us with a hardship. I don't know what the rest of you guys feel about that.
If that is the case.
If that's the case, you know.
I think that's the general rule for variances is?
The ordinance says that they're requested to be there, and that, of course, to not come, you know, could result in denial of the application, it doesn't require automatic denial, that's at your discretion.
The variances are generally viewed, have some kind of hardship.
A variance requires a hardship, I mean, the whole purpose of a variance, and, you know, it's not monetarily, it's usually topographically, geographically, an issue outside of your control. Is there a recommendation from the Planning Commission on how you want to move forward on this item?
Go ahead.
Yes.
I'm looking to motion deny.
Or so we table it?
I don't know.
Make motion to deny, I don't know if we vote on it, or how you need to do that, but I don't think we fully in full understanding.
If we table it, can they come back to the very next meeting?
It would still go to the Board of Commissioners with the motion to table based on lack of information presented and lack of response at the meeting, I mean, that could be the motion.
Think you come back to the very next Planning Commission meeting?
We would have to advertise it again.
Have to advertise it again, so if we, either way, either way, if we table it or deny.
Well, no, that's not true, if you were to table it, the item's already been properly advertised. You could bring it back up at a future meeting, and the only prob, it wouldn't come back to you guys, it would be brought up by the board if they decided to table it.
To the Commissioners.
Yeah.
I say, I don't want to strike deny them, because I don't know if, I mean, you know, I don't know if it's a family hardship, or, you know.
I agree, I mean, I thought if we denied it, and they came back.
I mean, and either way, I mean, the Commissioners still gonna make their commitment.
If you deny, if it gets denied by the Board of Commissioners, they'll have to wait six months before they can request the same action, if it gets tabled.
That's what I was trying to get at, I don't, you know, I don't want to hold them up, as, you know, push it way on down the road. So if we table it, it'll be less time in between when they.
It could, if you recommend tabling the item, and it goes to the board, and they follow the recommendation and say, we agree, it needs to be tabled, they could hear it at the very next meeting if they wanted to.
Or they can go ahead and prove it, if that you still.
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
Now second. All right, got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is tabled.
Okay. So the next items involve the same piece of real estate, so we can head and go on both of those together if you'd like.
Okay.
Items number two and three are rezoning request from Patricia Timms Estate, Shady Lane, Tacoa, parcel 043214. Both properties are currently, well, it's one property right now, currently zoned as agricultural intensive. The proposed action to be taken is to rezone 1.01 acres to residential single for property combination, and to rezone 0.32 acres for residential single for property combination. Both are from lots on the north, you'll see the survey actually in your packet. Pull it up here, and you'll see on the top end, the two lots that are being requested to be parceled off there and combined conveyed with the adjoining property. You will note that that 0.32 acre parcel is under the minimum one acre requirement. That's okay, because you're, they're requesting it be rezoned to residential single. The property to the north is residential single, so if it's combined, it increases the acreage of that subject property. It's really pretty simple, they're trying to sell this land and convey it. It still leaves quite enough acreage in the AI zone parcel, and allows for a bit more acreage and buffer on the residential single side to the north. Staff recommendation for both items two and three are to approve as requested. Any questions from the Planning Commission? Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of these rezoning requests? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to these requests? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearings for items number two and three are closed.
Take these both, vote on both at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Not all, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve, we got a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second, all in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
All right, items number four and five also involve the same piece of real state, so we can carry those together if you'd like and discuss them together. Item number four is a conditional use request from Ziad Galib, 2874 Rock Quarry Circle, Tacoa. Property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to utilize the existing office space for a barber shop and office. And item number five is a variance request for the same property owner and subject property, and it's to grant a variance to allow for a barber shop until the home is constructed. Let me go a little bit into these items, so you can understand them a bit better. On March 27th, the property was conditionally approved to allow for a tree nursery on site, I'm sure you'll recall that item. Back then, it was, the property is 4.31 acres, and the property owner is now requesting that the existing office building be additionally utilized to allow him to move his barber shop business and barber chair there. Section 59-1411 of our ordinance clearly allows, as a home-based occupation, a barber shop limited to two patrons at one time, that is a conditional use, however. This is a low intensive use of the property with very little traffic on site. I've discussed this with the property owner, who states that they own their home-based hair salons in the county, and that this space would be limited to appointment-based clientele serving approximately 10 haircuts a day. The property immediately to the right is 24 acres, and is zoned for agricultural intensive use. To the west is 24 acres, and is also zoned for agricultural residential use. And the property to the north is 2.65 acres, and is zoned for residential single use. Staff does believe this would be appropriate as a use for a home-based business in accordance with the county ordinance. With that being said, let me move forward to the other staff report. The same section, 59-1411, which allows as a home occupation, a barber shop limited to two patrons, also says that the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the residential use of the dwelling. There is no present residential use on site. So thus, a home occupation by itself is not appropriate, and a variance would be required to allow for the placement of a home-based business prior to the placement of the principal use. With that being said, there has been steps already put in place to get the residential structure going on site. The property owner has already pulled a septic permit for a two-bedroom, two-bathroom house, and has pulled a building permit for construction, and anticipates that the home will be fully completed within the next 12 to 18 months. Staff discussed this with the county attorney, and this has provided some justification to allow for the variance to be approved, as it does not set a precedent to allow generally for the placement of a home-based business prior to the placement of the principal use, the home, and that there is a clear set of standards that the property must meet during the permitting process to move forward, and that the process has already begun. Permitting requires that work must substantially begin within six months, and continue positively through the inspection process. As long as the property continues to meet these inspections and permitted work is completed accordingly, the barber shop could be allowed to occupy, excuse me, operate prior to the principal use, since the principal use is presently under construction. Staff should take note to evaluate that the work is being completed substantially, and it is the recommendation of staff that the conditional use be approved for 12 months, with follow-up schedule at the 12-month mark to determine current conditions on the construction of the home, and determine whether the conditional use permit should expire or be allowed to be renewed. Again, with that being said, recommendation from staff is to approve the conditional use, and to approve the variance for 12 months as the building permitting and inspection process is underway, with follow-up to begin at the 12-month mark to determine potential renewal of the permit. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission before we open up the public hearing?
What would the penalty be if construction of the home had not progressed in the 12-month period?
Well, the conditional use permit would cease to expire, because it would only be approved for 12 months.
It would be cool as well.
Well, we don't, we don't have a business license, but they would not be able to conditionally operate the business there if there was no substantial work, and there would be follow-up at the 12-month mark to determine whether or not that was the case.
And once it's completed, the house is completed, he'll still be able to operate his.
Yes, he wouldn't need the, he wouldn't need the variance any longer, because you're conditionally approving the home-based business, and the home-based business allows there to be a home-based business if conditionally approved, if there's a principal use on site.
You've been in the secondary structure.
Yes, sir, oh, well, that's up to you to determine as well, generally, it's supposed to be in the primary structure, but there's already an office building on site.
And the?
But it's being, he is asking for it to utilize the existing office structure on site.
And we didn't do, so the office that we approved earlier was not considered home-based?
No, no, you approved a conditional use for a tree nursery.
And the, and the structure.
But it's, it's not listed as a specific home occupation in our ordinance, which is why it wouldn't fall under the home occupation guidelines. This clearly falls under the home occupation guidelines of a barber shop limited to two chairs. So it would have to meet that. And it's clear, right?
So do we need to specify that it will be able to continue to operate?
I would be as specific as possible in any motion you make. Any, any other comments from the Planning Commission? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Yes, sir, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Ziad Galib, I'm the owner of the property, and I currently run Z's Hair Bar in town across from Walmart, on the back of Walmart. My situation is, I was planning on staying in there for the next couple years while the house is being built down there. But with the expenses of the business, being where I'm at, with over $2,500 a month in overhead, and being down there with the current office that I'm also making a mortgage on it, the bank could not approve, so I have to work with my finances, and the only way I'd be able to get approved for the home construction is if I clear, account $1,000 a month. So by moving the office down there for the next 12 months, I'll be able to run the barber chair down there, since the building has two offices. And at the same time, I'd be able to close the current location, which is about 1,200 square feet, and it's just way too big for me, by myself. That'll save me a whole lot on where I'm at now by moving to a smaller section. And that money can be invested into finishing up the house, since we already started. On it, so hopefully, within 12 to 18 months, the new home will be constructed, we'll be living and working, and I'll be able to run both businesses, the tree nursery, the barber chair, and living in the same location without having to do the travels. I already currently own a house here in Tacoa, that would be eventually either sold or leased out while we move down there, so.
And I know you said this would be by appointments.
Yeah, the business is strictly appointments, it's already listed on my business, and I average usually about 10.
I know you can get pretty busy over there, I've seen the parking lot some mornings, so.
Well, the parking lot used to be extremely busy, because I used to do only walk-ins. And I had seven, eight cars at the time trying to rush to be first in the, in the line. And as of January, the 1st of this year, it's no more but one vehicle now. Next door to me, we've got the coaching, I think, officer, something like that, that's where all the cars are now.
That's why it's trying to make this, this is a home base, probably.
Well, the home base, it'll be pretty much one car at a time.
Car at a time.
And up to about maybe six, seven cars, because even though I do 10 haircuts a day, a lot of times, it's a father and a couple boys or something like that, where they come together. Plus, I'm on the Rock Quarry Circle, I mean, I've got about 6, 700 trucks up and down that road every day.
Right, I understand.
Air bikes and everything else, comparing to me having 10 calm vehicles coming in and out of that, I don't think it's gonna be any, I hope it wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, before we move on, I'll just, I will reiterate, depending on the timeframe, if, you know, he said 12 to 18 months, if you decided to approve it for 12 months, he would need to come back and ask for an extension of that permit if the home wasn't done in 12 months, so, you know, that is a follow-up that you can utilize if you decide to move forward with that process. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to these items? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to these items? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to these items? The land use public hearings for items number four and five are closed.
So we need to get real specific making this motion.
We gave you a recommendation, but yeah, I mean, it's up to you to determine, just the key was that, that, I did discuss this with the county attorney, and he believed this did not set a precedent based on the fact that the building permit and home construction process has already begun, and it would be limited to a very specific period of time until the, the letter of the ordinance was, was met.
We could just approve yours, and like a simple approval of your...
I'm sorry.
We can just approve what you've already got.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you'd like to, that's, that's the recommendation from staff.
All right. What do you guys think? Questions? Thought, I mean, what's y'all thought?
I think it's, it's fine. Just to go over that one more time, so after the house is built, do we need to specify that it can continue to operate since it's home-based?
No, that, because, well, yeah, I mean, if that's what you want to do, there's two, there's two motions on the floor. One is to conditionally allow for the barber shop, full stop. You may want to allow for the barber shop at the office building. If I assume that's where Z wants to put it, you don't want to put it in the house, right?
No, no. It would be curable, I reckon, it would be for curable, because it's a worldwide office and a nursery. And the situation we have, you know, about, you know, just need... And the bank gave me six months to start one, that's the end, I can build by next year. Construction will get approved at that time. Also, so... Construction alone. Or maybe just...
And, and I think the motions, or his request, like we, we have it written here, granted conditional use permit to utilize existing office space for a barber shop and office. Staff recommendation was to approve as requested, so you, that would fall in line with staff recommendation to utilize the existing office space.
Specific to the bit, specific to...
Yeah, 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 and that's already in his request, and that's already in staff recommendation, so just depending on how you want to phrase it. And then, of course, the second one is a bit more specific, and that's just to make sure that a precedent isn't set in allowing a home-based business without a home.
And my, my concern for him was that we approved this and then...
It's got to go in the house.
Yeah, or, yeah, right. If somebody come down the road and say, well, you weren't, you were approved for a home-based business, and this is not in the home, so...
Yeah.
I think it's pretty specific in the recommendations that it's for that building.
I'm making motion to approve the staff recommendations.
I second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, I think that is it. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
All right, second. All right. Meeting adjourned.